Welcome everyone, I'd like to call the May 15th, we need the whole meeting to order at 5:30. I'd like to call out Deputy Mayor Doran Voss to read the acknowledgement please.
We would like to acknowledge we are in Treaty One territory, the traditional lands of the Nationabi, Crete, Oujiri and Dakota Peoples. Acknowledges the birthplace of the Maiti Nation, who respect the spirit and intent of treaties and treaty making, and remain committed to working in partnership with First Nations. And you with the Maiti people in the spirit of truth reconciliation and collaboration.
Thank you. Adoption of the agenda, item number three, motion to adopt the agenda as presented or amended. May I have them move please? Councillor Slaker, Secretary of State, there, Councillor Rondor. Are there any additions or amendments? Hearing seeing that, all in favor? Any polls? That's Carrie. Management reports. Item four point one, Public Works Report. Mr. Antichos is here, would you like to proceed?
Good evening. I was asked to come and just speak about roads a little bit. I don't know what you want me to tell you about the roads, so I'm gonna make it short and sweet, and I'll let you guys fill me in afterwards. Later on, if you want more, or what more you might be looking for. I can bring anything back. I did bring up map here for your reference. I apologize for the colored line. You can see where all the wards are, and then the red lines are where our graders work. But they all have their certain areas to go. I've got a list of every road in the RM. If you wanna know, I can tell you whether it's paved, gravel, mud. Both of them I can tell you off the top of my head, but. We are actually starting our construction tomorrow with Windtech. That was awarded the contract for reconstruction of the roads on. There's a rhythm there. We restrictions came off as effective today, so that they can start early, and they have to go up councils, so it will be done. Pretty early this year. We have started our graveling program. Over there over a landfill, we're hauling out. Doing the south area first. The roads are dusting out because they're so dry and no moisture, so you guys will be in the many calls for dust. Unfortunately, living on a gravel road, you get dust.
If I made this, when is it expected they'll start with the dust control?
For the graveling program is done, like I said, we started our with our own trucks. By next week, we'll have Armstrong going with theirs. Applying, I don't know exactly where they start, probably the north, then comes out, and once that's done. Or even when we're about sixty percent done graveling, we will start dust control. So. Within three weeks, we should be starting to apply dust control.
So the dust control doesn't go on after they say they've done five rows? And then the dust control check, or?
No, because of dust control, truck carries twenty thousand liters. Ending on the road, you're not spraying off twenty thousand liters, and they'll portal charges through the nose if we do it that way. We do have our own truck do it as well, but that's usually for catching up afterwards. We don't typically gravel over dust control unless it's needed. We won't typically grade a dust control road unless it's needed, especially now. Until we start doing our dust control program, then we will blade through everything and then re-spray them. So we're trying to minimize our dust for the residents, it doesn't always work. Hot hole patching, and we're going full go, we've got two crews going. Excuse me, we have a. Ash emulsion truck coming. July fourth, we have for two months this year. And that basically does the work of manual patching by hand. They've been doing that for the last couple of years here, so. It's been working really well. They're not, that's a. A lot of roadworks going on right now. I can bombard you with as much information as you want, but I don't think you need to hear it all.
Yes. The state of Clan de Boy Road, if I could just ask a quick question on that one. It looks like the the potholes are like through those different layers, like it's already. You know, to the to the gravel base of on that road.
Yeah.
And I know they started patching that area today, I was just wondering what the. The long term solution was for that one, if that's.
So. Our engineering team has a. Grading system, I'm not a hundred percent familiar with it, I know. They touched on it with me last week of how they do it, is they'll go out, the two of them, and they'll drive down or. Bandaboy Road, and they'll come up with a score for it, so all our roads are scored. And usually a five is the worst, one is the best. And then they'll come and do a short list every year, bring to you guys for approval for which ones get redone every year. And again, it's all budgetary restraints and how much we do it, right? So.
That was just my, I guess, you answered my question.
We've gone through one semi-load of patch already this year, we just got another one on Friday. So yeah, we've burned through the patch pretty quick.
Councillor Morecki had your hand first, then Councillor Hunt.
Okay, thank you. What I had was, we had talked about looking at ultimate products for dust control.
Yeah.
Just wondering if you made any decisions or. If you share that.
Yeah, just before I log here, what you guys approved five percent of the control budget to go towards cipher lock. And we have now secured that product, and we're going to be doing two test spots. But we're gonna do a whole mile solid, half a mile with four distributors, magnesium chloride. And then half a mile with the city. First city cipher lock. I'm not familiar with their product, it's a sugar-based product, I've never seen it. And we're doing two separate test sites, and we'll base it off of there. From what I found out so far in the research I've done, and we've had one Zoom meeting with the owner, and I did talk to him, the trade show there. It's gonna be fairly expensive compared to the magnesium chloride.
On that note, what road are you doing it on?
We are doing, and no fault of my own, Bandaboy Road and Nettley Road. Just because I live on that, I had nothing to do with that. I was hurrying to die before I started.
Spencer Donald, the high-traffic one, going to the land.
Actually, it was Longwood.
Our road is sprayed solid, it exists. Yeah. We can't do a test spot with a new product, because you're gonna have residuals in the road. And you wouldn't get a. A good reading of their product is, so we're doing it on. Virgin roads that have never had any dust suppressant on it ever.
So on Clan de Boy Road, I've been on it, and like I say, that's a road that. You have to do something with it, look at it, like when they did their assessment, it would have been last fall.
Yeah.
So they would have done their assessment, but the roads really. We're gonna lose a subbase if we don't put a layer over it, about. Six, seven years ago, Hall Road went the same thing, the road between Ward Five and Six. And they did a layer of asphalt over it, now it's perfect, but if you lose that subbase. And get into the, which is E and one on that road, which was in the molten fire put on years ago. You're gonna lose that subbase. And by patching it, you're gonna, you know, lose, you're gonna get those holes filled in, but you're gonna lose the rest of the of the base, so. That's typical, or the necessity of an emergency. To do that road now would be twenty percent of the cost of paving it. Like, like over top, because you got a good subbase, you don't need three or four inches, but maybe you don't need four or five inches, three inches is probably sufficient. And then you're perfect for many, many years. Because it's not a subbase failure, and that's what they always talk about sometimes, it's a subbase failure, but it's a surface failure on it. But if water gets into the E and one, it just gets softer and softer and softer, and we're gonna lose it. And then more of the top breaks off, and that's and that's a seal coat road, so it should be looked at of. I know it's spending money now, but it's saving money in the long run. Should be looked at.
Yeah, that's part of my overview of all the public works, like I said, they do their little grading system. Don't know why they are the end-all-tell-all of what road gets a five and what gets a one. A five to have a look at, figure that out.
Like stuff comes up over the winter, you know, just whatever happens, and when all road went like that, it was it was a process of freezing thaw cycle. Throughout the springtime that lifted the base. You know, and that's maybe what happened there. It wasn't crack sealed enough for, you know, in last fall, whatever. But like I say, it's a prime example of doing that now, and saving the saving the basin, it wouldn't hurt them, maybe just. Asking our contractor to take a look at it one day and getting a. Whole bar price, we come back to council and see if we can get it done, because. You know, we're very good, not gonna lose it, you know, and it's. A lot of people live down that road, it's it ends up medicine, medicine, and medicine. Won't lose it, you know.
We're getting an updated price on the millings from Windtech as well, so.
Thank you.
Sure, it'll be different than last year, how many miles?
Half a kilometer. It goes from just patching their subdivision to medicine to medicine creek. So from. Medicine Creek to the highway is one mile. So, I know it'll be half a kilometer, it'll be half a kilometer. But it's. Yeah.
There were ones that we got, you know, there's we got the one time, no conditional threat, and the problem was because of all the flooding. Of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Um, I wonder if there was any money left over on that?
I don't believe so. I don't know, Tim, if you have anything else to offer.
It's it's behind us, yeah, it's in it's in twenty twenty-two, so it's been it's been included in twenty twenty-two against some of the costs. In twenty twenty-two, the hundred and thirty-eight.
Okay. Because we never, I just mean, shall I be true? But I don't know, we never got a report world that funny. You have that?
I don't have that, no.
That's your summer half of all, yeah.
So perhaps Windtech could have something left over.
Well, it would be asphalt, like hot, like they'd have to bring the equipment here, but. When you have perfect base like that, and just laying over like you'd patch those holes, which you're doing now anyway. But it's just gonna continue to lift, and then. Once the water gets into that E and one, it just gets wet, and it's an acid of molten fire, which has worked good on our roads with the seal coat, and it's. It's probably expanded the life span of them by half, probably by using it in one. I'm just saying, it it worked on on the boundary road there, Hall Road years ago, and saved it in its own. It's a shame to to lose it.
So how long is that one?
About half a kilometer.
It's not much, I'm getting paid once.
I urge you, when you go home, go that way a little bit, and you can create roads that way, and you turn right before, so you'll see, you'll see, you'll see it, and then it goes up to number nine highways.
Like Joyce said, maybe the since Windtech's starting early, and they got some leftover stuff with that.
Will be leftover money. Yeah.
From last year, or when that road was done by the bridge. Councillor Brian, there was a concern raised about the bad job, there was something wasn't done right.
Well, that was in the dip, that was what, four years ago. The dip was done, a repair in the dip, and.
Did that get fixed?
The contractor said he would would guarantee it, and he was a little bit late, and we didn't wanna do it apparently, and the contractor said it'll be okay. But it's just a bit rough, yes, it didn't break up there, and just that it's a bit rough right on that hill. Go bottom of your vehicle. A couple with, a couple, well.
I can't understand why this contractor not responsible, there's a warrant.
With the dip, it's people, it's coupled with the dip and the bump that make it rough, because. Your body, I know as you going up there, it's very narrow, it's a very shallow dip.
So that it never got fixed.
It also depends if you say about warranty, while if we just take a road that is crumbling to begin with, and doesn't have a base on it, and just throw something on top of it. It's not gonna last. You know. Depending on what is underneath it to begin with. The traffic it takes, heavy traffic it takes, like. I drove down Boyd today. Boy, that's where you guys put those milling gun last year. I don't see any issue with doing that at all, I was thoroughly impressed, and I've never worked with that in my life. That's why we did someone. Oh, I'm impressed. Oh, man. We've got that stuff that was in the Taylor pit before we did that with the graders ourselves. Oh, yes, I did work with them. But we got the world to that, that's different. But something like that, I don't know if that would be the answer, well, just try to save.
Probably not, because that's too good of a base to lose.
You're still gonna get the water, right?
Right, but so if you went asphalt, you're gonna save it, then like I say, just get a price and then come back to council. We have money in reserve for it through the gas tax fund, that's what the money's for. So, road repair, and like I say, it's it's no fault of anybody's, it's just things happen over the winter.
It might be.
But like I say, when people go home, go turn turn left, and it's only a quarter mile and or a half mile, and you go, and you go to whatever, and I'll see the shape.
Could be other ones that are work.
And the base is perfect. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Carry on, Trevor, thank you.
I don't have much more, but. I was brought to my attention just two seconds ago, that there could be other roads that need this. Or or less than Clan de Boy Road. I'm here in Settler's Trail, and it is terrible. There's, I've been on a couple of roads, Lockport Road is terrible. From, where is that? Two thirty Guineas, last quarter. When Lockport Road is getting done, two thirty Guineas this year. So again, I don't know how they did their grading system in the past. And even if it was done last fall, like, that should still be okay. But, yes, like Councillor Hunt said, things happen, winters happen. Water gets in the roads, and the water is the worst enemy for any road. Whether it's a paved road or a gravel road.
Freezing thaw is bad.
Yeah. That, we live in Manitoba, that's the joy of that part. And back in the day when they made use of the road, they dug a ditch and put it over here, and then made road.
Councillor.
So I, like I said. Sensitive counsel to get some prices on them, and look at them, and. We have to do it this year, well, it comes out of reserve, and then we can maybe do less, and then do less next year, because it's gonna, they're gonna be required to do next year anyway. They for sure be on the list for next year, and if they didn't make the list for next year, well, then we have to redo our grading system. Because, but, so we spend a little bit less money next year, we will refine the money. We don't wanna lose them, because like you're gonna spend three times as much getting it back to the way it was.
Thank you. Yeah, do you have anything further to add?
I do not, like I said, if. I'm sure you guys can come up with other things you'd like to see, if you want me back here to touch on other roads, or. Highlight something else, because like I said, there's a lot of information that they have over there, I just didn't wanna bombard you with all of it. I was shocked.
I just wanted to say, I walk a lot, and I started on the trails and all that, it's wonderful to see the RM truck out. With decos on them, the staff are friendly, courteous. Polite, they have no idea who I am, I'm just walking this big working dog. But it is wonderful to see that again. So thank you very much for that. I have not.
I didn't do anything.
Obviously, you've done something, because there's. Just a. A few times I encountered RM workers, and. Wasn't the friendliest.
No.
Well, I'm always like, hey, good morning, good afternoon, how's it going, hope you have a great day, and you're lucky if you got a grunt, whereas. This spring I have noticed, it's like, hey, thank you very much, hope you have a nice day too.
You have to remember one thing, that usually when resident, whether it's a councillor or not, comes up to a public works employee, it's usually not good. So, public works employees are very reserved when they talk to the public if they don't have to, because they're always cast in a bad light. You know, so they're always have their guard up all the time.
Councillor.
Yeah, if I could just add something on that point, I would certainly be okay if. If you or Brent got together and. Had sort of some sort of a training program for our employees on how to deal with public. Certainly be okay with that.
They've been not trained, I'll go back to even the days when I was an employee here as an operator is. We were always told, as you try not to. Engage with the residents if you don't have to, because usually it's negative to begin with, no matter what you're doing, whether you're blading a road, making dust, or you're digging their ditch, and they don't like it. It's always negative. We've always been told is, here's the phone number to the office, go to the office, try not to engage in that, because. Doesn't end well, and I can tell you right now, there's a few hot heads over there that have shorted used it, so it doesn't take much for them to go off. I used to be one. Not anymore, they just want to rattle my cage, you know, so. But, yeah, I tell everybody now, find, somebody being nice, say hi and wave, and but try not to engage with them, because it will not turn over.
I never thought about that, sorry, okay, thank you.
No, and that's fine.
Okay, four point two, the April public works report. Councillor, have any comments? Paul Trevor's here on his report. I wanna thank you, by the way, it's a very good report. Um, I did have one, I did call it. But we're done with Trevor. While Trevor is here, his report is attached, if anybody has any questions or comments on it. And then Trevor will be able to leave.
Yeah, I wish for these, there's that color reports, thank you so much for these, these are pretty well put together.
Councillor Morecki.
Yeah, just, if you could clarify something, how is the new fuel management system working is? Do you?
We don't have any, this was started before I started here.
Okay.
So there is one. Quote, I guess, if you wanna call it, sitting on my desk. When I worked at St. Clement's, we had a different fuel system in there, so I'd rather reach out to those people, I've got all the information. It's coworker at St. Clement's sent me the information late last week. So I can, I wanna get in touch with them and see what they can bring here, go at price. Just to have it more accountable for fuel, like. Yeah. We had a system at St. Clement's where every person was a keypad. The only way you can get fuel, punch in your code, what vehicle is going into, and it's all tracked. Even if you're putting it into a slip tank in the back of a truck. You still account for it for what piece of equipment is going in. It's all tracked.
Councillor Slaker.
What about the GPS, where are we at with that?
I signed the contract with them last Tuesday.
Oh, wonderful.
They'll be shipped out probably next week, I would think. And they'll have all the installs.
Perfect, thank you.
You know, along for the hardware to be installed. Shouldn't take, most of them are plug and play, okay. There's. Four graders and three tractors have to be hardwired, but that's.
Councillor, any further questions? The only one question or comment is on your report. Vendors have notified Public Works, they're a long lead times, one year for heavy equipment purposes. So things we've approved in the front, will we be getting them this year?
A good question. Ron had put that in there, and I left it in there just for you guys as a reference. I was. Would have been buying a tandem this year in St. Clement's. I talked to a few vendors, it was the eighteen months delivery time. But that could change, I don't know, graders are about a year out. So that's why it's put in there, so we're gonna go thinking to the future of what we need to buy, and again, our. Capital five-year plan, ten-year plan for equipment is not. I don't like it here, I have to change that. So that you guys can see what my succession plan is for replacing equipment and trucks and everything else. You'll always be a delay, especially now with COVID. Supply chain. To buy anything new is ridiculous. Or when we tender it out, we put a delivery date on it. And if they can't match it. But that's something we'd have to, I would have to figure out, because if I do that, I'm kinda handcuffing myself up. But graders, there's only two companies out there really anymore, so. Three. But one's not worth their weight, so. In my opinion.
Hey, thank you, very good. Councillor, any further questions? Oh, very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Well.
Councillor, do you have any further, while we attach, do you have any comments on any of the other reports?
I just have one question, I seen, and it would be on Tim's report, I see the twenty twenty-one audit. Status ongoing, started to come up first. We thought that that would have been all submitted. Thought that it all gone through the auditor room, is that the correct question?
It has, there was some additional questions from the auditor, so there is some back and forth still happening on the twenty twenty-one audit.
Oh, so that's why it says ASAP, because you're still going back and forth, is that what you think?
And it's still going back and forth, and the ASAP means that I I want it as soon as possible. I want it finalized as soon as possible.
They have everything. We have everything.
But they're going, and then asking questions, did that?
But they're they're. I've I've seen this in other jurisdictions, they're. Their throughput coming from when you give them all your audit documents are. Five, six months, sometimes even more, so. You know, they've had our stuff, you know, since December. And we're still waiting, and what happens is, when you don't get it back, then then your finance team, Tim. Can't start the twenty twenty-two, because you need all the results for twenty twenty-one. Yeah.
Okay, I I just thought maybe I'd. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I have just one question, so on the same twenty twenty-two audit ongoing. End date June thirty, but you had told us just last night as the September date. So that's why it's changed.
Uh, it's, yeah, it's correct, yeah, an easy way to answer that is yes.
Thank you. So more realistically is September.
Correct.
Because I think. It's in last week's record, the twenty-two audits of financial statements for Selkirk are available for review. We'll have to have a discussion on audits.
Maybe, yeah.
I've heard change that. Okay, any further comments on the. On any of the other manager, Councillor Rondor?
Yeah, I have the question in regards to the water feasibility study. At the top, it says in progress, but in the middle, it says. It's completed April twenty-seventh. So I'm kinda wondering what's what's that all about?
What sheet are you looking?
Who's report?
Yeah, who's report?
Environment Utilities. Randy Borst. We were talking about the water feasibility as an important thing here, and it looks like it's done. And so I'm wondering why we're not being able to look at it yet.
It's not done.
Says it's completed in the report. Yeah, April twenty-seven.
Oh, they're just saying the top lines is water feasibility study status in progress.
Then down and below, three below, it says completed.
The RFP has been completed, the cost sharing agreement with Water Services Board has completed. All waters through, I see what you're saying. The water feasibility.
But there's a report for review, right, and it says. End of June final report, early August, so. I had the final report coming July twenty-third, so they've 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 gone, and they've given administration a draft of where they're at now, that's what's complete. So there's no final product to come.
Yeah, I think after water feasibility study completed, April twenty-seventh, that shouldn't be in there.
Well, I, you know, that may maybe he's just worried. Yeah. Because there's a draft on what they've done today.
And another question in regards to. The trail on Highway nine. Says that there's a. Something being reviewed by Manitoba Transport. And I thought that was gonna come to council before it went out and looked at.
Well, this grant was applied for quite a while back. Right now they're dealing with. It, it doesn't really matter what council says, it will be what MI says.
Because I've looked, I've driven down after our meeting last and driven down Highway nine and. And as far as I'm concerned, that. That's a. A terrible design.
Well, MI might not allow, MI might not allow any trail.
Yeah, well, I don't think they're going to allow a crosswalk over number nine. By Park Street.
We'll have to wait till we get the results from MI. Before I can bring it back to council, so we're waiting. We're waiting for results on crossings, on which side it's going to be on. We're also waiting for MI on, on. On, on their response on, you know. Do we, does MI want us to do a million dollar walking bridge across the creek? Or do they?
Yeah, and then I, I even suggested that we could go under the road, remember last year? And I looked at it, I, I was down there, looked at it, there's no way that you can walk under.
Under the road.
Yeah, like if it was the bridge tied up, you could go underneath. The path, the path could go underneath by a follow the park's creep.
Yeah, you can either go on the east side or the west side. Yeah, so if you go on the west side, you've got to build a million dollar walking bridge. And right now they're looking on the east side and saying if there's enough, you know, would you be able to put a trail there? So we're asking for that permission right now. So they could deny either. And there's nothing that we can say or the council can say to. To go across, right? So it's on, it's on pending till we get some. Responses from MI before we can bring it to council. I can't bring it to council and council says. You know, let's do this with the trail and if we don't have, we don't have the authority from MI to do it.
I was just thinking because when you go south of St. Andrews. Into West St. Paul, that, that trail was on the west side or on the east side, sorry.
Well, so trails in, in West St. Paul is, is on the east side, then the west side, then the east side, then the west side, so. It's not on the, on the east side by the cemeteries. So you have to cross by River Crest, you have to go across. And then you have to come back across again at. At Rivers Edge. So there's a numbers, a number of places that you have to cross Main Street. In West St. Paul also, so. I get it, I get how dangerous the highway is.
Any further comments or questions? Okay, I have four point three animal control report, any comments? Okay, fine, then. Hearing team now will move, the reception of delegates. Accounts, April twenty twenty-three financial statements, any comments? Counselor Siker?
Could you tell a couple of questions? Could you know, Jim, I'm not automatically informed yet. Okay, so I noticed that the fire department came up in twenty twenty-two, fifty-two thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars over. How did that happen when the fire department, having been in charge of their own budget?
Sorry, ask that question for me one more time, please.
On the twenty twenty, our Mr. St. Andrews Revenue and Expense Report Summary, December thirty-first. Twenty twenty-two?
Yes.
Okay, so. My question, one of my questions is, the fire department comes up showing their fifty-two thousand plus over the, what was budgeted. How did that happen when the fire department was in control of their own budget?
So in twenty twenty-two, they were not in control of their budget.
You know that?
Right. So.
How, how did we end up fifty-two thousand dollars over? Like I thought we took it away from the fire department, took the budget away from the fire chief. To prevent so that there would be no over.
So this is a comparison of costs year to year, so it's not a budget comparison?
It says actual and budget, and then it says budget remaining.
No, you're looking at the April twenty twenty-three?
No, December thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Okay, well, we'll come, well, are we, are we moving right past April then?
Counsel, we, we're on six point one, April twenty twenty-three financial.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm ahead of you.
We, we'll come back to that.
All right. Okay, so our item six point one. April twenty twenty-three financial statements detailed report. Does anybody have? Any questions or comments on that? So then, okay, hearing and seeing then, we can. Move to the financial statement summary report. Any comments or questions? Now, okay, so hearing and seeing that, so now we'll move to six point two. The twenty twenty-two year-end report. So you. Were referring to twenty twenty-two year-end summary report, the middle one? Or the year-end report?
Revenue and expense report summary.
The title difference on our agenda. It's titled difference on our agenda. See, pardon me. So the revenue and expense report to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two?
And what numbers are by that are you looking for, like the GL number?
Did I say wrong?
No, no.
That's the one with the comments then.
Yeah, this summary report, yeah, okay. So. I'm going to answer this in two parts. And I think the most important part is, I have a report that's coming in camera that talks in detail. About the, about the fire halls for twenty twenty-two. This answer may be more completely answered when we go through that review. But in summary, this line here called protective services. On the. Financial summary report, I believe that's what you're referring to, Counselor Slicker. And it has. A fifty-two thousand dollar. Overage for the year.
Yeah, the fire hall.
And it's for the fire halls. So when I go in detail, we can look at the individual lines. For that group.
Can you give something general, so?
Yeah, generally.
Because you're going in camera for. For that other part, so just in general.
Yeah, so generally speaking, there was turnout gear that was purchased that wasn't, wasn't budgeted for. That was the main, that was the main, the main additional charge.
And, and the, the, that was done by the fire department, not by. Like.
That's right. That is correct. The purchase orders were initiated. By the fire halls. And forwarded to our purchasing manager. For ordering and through our purchasing procurement policy, any purchases that go above. A threshold for the fire halls is five hundred dollars would have gone to the CAO for approval. So all the expenses as they are listed. Have been seen by through that internal process.
Okay, I get that, but we're still fifty-two thousand dollars over. And we put in, it's my understanding, last year and, and previous council, put in a, a catch. Net per se, of taking a budget away from the fire chief.
Right.
Employing a purchase order person, employee. And we're fifty-two thousand dollars over. There's the fire department kind of sitting there going, what happened? Because they've never been over. So I don't know, I'm not in previous council, I'm just telling them what they're telling me. So we put a catch. That there and for the first time, we're way over.
So. With respect to the fire halls and them not having access to the budget. Is, was a precautionary measure. To. Help better control spending. Some expenditures still happen regardless of, of our best efforts to control it. It's whether they had their budget or didn't have their budget, doesn't have, didn't have an impact on. On the whether they spent more or not. The, the cost still took place. Whether they would have had a budget or didn't have a budget, the cost still took place, like.
So who authorized it?
It would have been the CEO, but let's remember that a, a large portion of this.
Okay, and I thank you, I just needed to say it out loud because it's something that jumped out at a lot of people and they're really, they're really angry.
And it may have been higher if the controls that we had in place weren't in place, and I'll just say that.
Okay, all right, that's okay. So then that's one, do you mind if I carry on? The protect, protective services were nine hundred nineteen thousand six hundred and seventy-eight over. I think I just want to say out loud that that doesn't prove that we need to pull in a bylaw department or whatever. That in my humble opinion is a prime example of it, that's a lot of money to be over. If I'm not understanding what that department did.
Can, can I help with that? So in my comments there, I'm, I'm noting that we had costs for the disaster relief in the spring that were charged in this account. Those are exceptional costs, one-time costs, we don't expect to see those all the time. So you'll see that I've noted that a hundred thirteen thousand was the special cost, so. We got some of it back, yes.
Can I jump in here? So when you'll see an expenditure over here that you're over budget, your revenues would have gone up too, so anything you've got. For disaster financial assistance, won't lower that number, it will come in in revenues. So you'll see your revenues are increased and, but your expenses are increased too, right? But you can't not show that you didn't spend that money.
Okay.
But you recovered it with revenues. Well, I don't know what portion, but a, a portion what was ever approved by DFA was recovered.
Am I kind of around the right line in my thought of? This really does work towards, we need to get the bylaw area cleaned up and. You don't know about the bylaw.
Well, no, I, I, I mean, I can, I can answer that way. You know, if we ordered fifty-two thousand dollars in safety gear for the fire department, the fire chief still had to order it. So it's, it's not like the, the CAO may have authorized it, but the CAO didn't order it. So if someone's claiming that, you know, we've never been over before, they still ordered it. And, you know, and if it's, if it's a safety concern, you know, then it becomes a, a, another. You know, it's another argument whether you're over or not because it's safety, right? I'd hate to be in the position where we didn't allow someone to order safety equipment.
One hundred percent agree, yeah.
And in, in, in the. The other one is, you know, for the, the, the wettest year on record. I think if, you know, if you can remember back to, to last year, I can, roads were getting washed out just when you thought. It seemed a little bit sunlight, more water came and, and fields and roads that. You know, were, were usually dry, were even. Were even a disaster, so all RMs across the province all see issues there. And yes, we are, we are looking, you'll probably see a bulletin for. Municipal safety manager that will oversee fire, bylaw, municipal emergency system. Coming up in, you know, before the end of June, so.
End of June?
Yeah.
And, and one more question, I'm sorry, what is asset management at a hundred and sixteen thou?
So that was a project that was planned last year, it didn't start last year, so we carried it forward and it's in our budget for twenty twenty-three. So it's a project to buy software to build up our asset inventory. Database and, and stuff like that.
Good, thank you, that's all I have for that.
Counsel, do you have any further comments? Or question?
What about the, one more? How did it work as counselors, like, okay, when we did the budget, I have thirty-four thousand some dollars to spend to my name, if I understood that correctly. What happened when you look at the budget thing and? Account that goes open, where did that money come?
Usually comes from other counselors that went under.
Really?
Yeah.
So I just, just to add, a, a, a budget is. Is generally, it's, it's developed. To be a guide, it's intended to be as close as we can. Get it to be, sometimes one line will go over and another line will go under. And between the two, the bottom amount, the surplus or, or we'll just say surplus, won't change. So it can happen that unforeseen things will come up. We make a, a, a best guess that, you know, how much gas is going to cost for the year, right? And we budget for it. We make our best guess at how much hydro is going to cost for a year. And it may be over rendered when it comes to some things that are a little more controllable, like the example of, of counselor spending. We monitor that, right? And we will be reporting to you regularly so that. Counselors that can, can control their own spending can say, okay, I know that I've only got five thousand left in my budget this year. I won't go to this conference, I won't. Do this other thing.
Do we need a bylaw put in place to make that happen? So this, this doesn't happen going forward?
I don't think so.
So. Again, these are questions that all should have been asked, like we have checked details, I've sent in prior, is unfair putting staff on the. Point, you know, to answer, answer questions like this, and again, you're focusing on myself. I don't know what the problem is with, with that, but that's the case here. If you're picking on me, fine, but I. Further weigh my mileage is more, I may stay in a hotel more than someone from the South will.
I didn't even realize it was you.
Yeah, right, don't give me that. Anyway, anyway. I was speaking to, I was speaking to, it's, it's mentioned on the amount because when you said four thousand dollars over, that's my amount that I.
Like I thought.
Okay, fifty, forty-five hundred, I'm speaking as well. Budgets, as we all know, are best estimates at the bottom line, you know, we always come in budget, same as the fire hall. We don't know what that fifty-two hundred, fifty-two thousand dollars overage is, is, is for, it's unfair to put it on the staff. Then it was turnout gear and you're right, if it's a safety issue, it shouldn't even be an issue. So in the future, any of these questions should be sent in, in an email, it's great to discuss them. After we have the answers, but until we have the answers, we shouldn't be putting staff on the spot.
Yep, here, your boss.
I was going to say that you're going to see a higher, a higher amount this year anyways. Considering COVID is, is over and now there's a lot more in-person meetings and none of that Zoom stuff, so chances are you're going to see a lot more. Increase, like an increase of the, in the, in those areas.
So are you saying then that what we budgeted, thirty-four thousand?
We don't know yet, that's just the numbers, we're going to have to figure it out when we get, maybe a biannual report on it and take a look and see.
All right, as long as we can.
If you look at quarterly here, it's, it's pretty close, but if I, if I look back into our twenty twenty-two. COVID was just, you know, the restrictions were just lifted. And you can kind of see where, you know, some of these amounts are, you know, lower than what we have right now. But, you know, we're going to a lot more. Conferences, a lot more meetings, a lot more things, a lot more in-person, so. I would expect these to go up. And you have to look at it, you know, half a year or a certain order, see exactly where we are and then you have to increase the budget next to the.
Yeah, I get, I get that, that's what I'm trying to figure out, we just came off of doing the budget. Felt pretty good about that. And then. We got different, different numbers that are getting fallen and, and that, that just sort of concerns me. So that sort of heads to my question, then I'm sorry, but I will always ask financial questions, that's just me.
Okay, and if I could add to, to verify, we asked about if a bylaw, you know, to go over budget. I believe it was you or somebody else saying. That during budget discussions to have separate line items like other, like Selkirk does other, for each counselor because. We have. Count conferences, we're told that's on another line item. For council members. And it should be, I would support each count for full transparency, each council member have. What they attended, what they attended, their cost. Does see exactly what came up. With that, well, those that. With that, well, those that are res- respect the the dollars and then. Anybody else can go take it. I'm not comfortable with that personally.
Well, well, I think, I think you'll be getting reporting. The reporting will get better and better for council. I mean. You need to police yourselves. And you need to be looking at where you are in regards to your budget and your actual spending. And I don't think. You know, I really don't think anyone should be over budget because you've, you've made this uh, uh, a commitment. We made a budget. You have a commitment to stay under budget as a a counselor. Or a, you know, a mayor, D P mayor, unless it's extraordinary circumstances and and uh. And I think, uh, you know, moving forward, that's how it should be. I don't think we should uh be seeing people over. If people are over. Uh, you know, they can explain themselves at the council meeting, being transparent and and sometimes, yeah, if. You know, in in all budget lines, someone may be a little bit over and and somebody's under, right? So. I think uh when we get to the half year and the three-quarter year that we should be reporting back and. And saying if you keep spending the way you're spending, if if someone's on forecast to be over, we're going to have to alert.
And I I love that. That's wonderful. And but I also will, I'll send a email in regards to what the mayor is talking about because I did bring that up.
Uh, can I add to that as well? Uh, we have typically done forecasting in the fall. Uh, looking at the spending to date and thinking about each category and where we think the spending is going to go. So you'll see reporting like that uh in the fall when it really starts to become important. As you're getting close to the end of the year and you really want to look at your spending, the things that. What we call controllable expenses, we'll start looking at and we'll say, if we continue in this pattern, we're going to be here with our spending in December. Um, and so on. Some things are uncontrollable. We can't. We can't do anything about them. We can only plan as best as we can for them, but there are other items that are controllable and and travel is, you know, a a real nice. Um, item that can be thought about and really planned on, so it can be considered a controllable item. So and and the forecasting in the fall uh is something that we have done here. Uh, and I'm planning on doing it uh later on. So as the reporting, now that we've got the budget, um. The the reporting and the budget will go hand in hand now. The forecast will come in the fall uh and uh and you. Uh, you folks will have uh have that uh opportunity to see some of the reporting that I've done in the past as well.
Perfect. Thank you. Look forward to it. Thank you for your time, everybody.
Thank you. Any further comments or question? Okay, we'll move on to Noel Business. New business item eight point one, R R P D memo subdivision approvals and variances required. Um, attachment is the R R P D memo. Lisa, did you want to expand on that?
Um, I could have, if we're at the board meeting. Yeah, if you don't mind, I I wasn't quite prepared to speak on, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think I brought it up my last external committee report. Counselor Smiker, you're on the board too. Jump in anytime, please. Um. And here it came forward. Other R M segments, especially if it's really pushing them. Well, personally, I think this is a good thing. Like when we, a finding here has come before us, there's a subdivision. Then you'll see later on, one of the conditions is the subdivision is it comes back to council for a variance because the law is undersized. So by combining them. It's going to all be done at the same hearing. It saves manpower, time, how everybody's time and planning board act at our end to have a separate hearing. It saves the applicants applying and. Do whatever their fifteen or eighteen hundred dollars to apply for a separate. Because the answer's been, we always approve, it's going to be the same. That's one of the conditions to be true on. Derek Eno explained it's in the Planning Act. That's why it's done that way, and that's why. I believe it's increments, ordering a resolution to go to A M M. Um. To have. The Planning Act amended to combine these two. But Derek says it's ready for funding. We can do that ahead.
Was there an extra cost? Because the reason for not doing that with a subdivision and a variance is because if the subdivision is not approved. Then they've paid for the variance and the variance has not hurt them because the subdivision has not been approved. Like, we can have subdivisions to come through here and are not not approved. Then the person has paid for both the.
There won't be any extra cost. Like, they'll pay when they pay for the subdivision. And then it, they'll have the same. Variance order. Included with that, so there's no additional cost.
Um, I I just want to chime in here. I think my understanding, this is a little bit different. Is that what they're saying is there's currently, there's a dual approval process and what they're, what they're trying to remove is that variance at all. If you are approving that subdivision, you are in effect approving a smaller lot size. So instead of making two applications, approval of the subdivision itself. Means that you are approving the minimum or the, well, the variance for these, a smaller lot. So you wouldn't even require a second application subdivision approval would, would um. Would take that into account.
So by saying that, then you're you're approving, when you approve the subdivision, you're approving the varying. So say at the S R is two hundred, two hundred foot frontage on and then on and on, and S R. And you're reducing, if the subdivision says a hundred and fifty, then by approving this other vision, you're allowing one hundred and fifty. So, which is good because this is, I like to say that the board members on there, this has always been. I had a problem. If we have a variance come in for a building too close to a lot line, it's six hundred dollars. If we have a variance come in for a a lot undersized, it's eighteen hundred dollars. And the reason for that was. They could never give me a reason for it. They said. Because it's the same, it's the same um material going out and the same. Uh, advertising for a variance, whether it be building too close or a lot size. And again, I don't like saying this, but their answer was, because now if a person's getting six lots rather than five, they can afford it.
I know. Okay, see that I asked a question of work. It will come, the applicant will file the application for a five lot subdivision. They will say what, planning board will say what sizes of the lots are. Because then they can't turn around and make those five lots into ten lots. Right? So we'll have all, it's just basically like this is that. No longer have this dual. Application pro, dual approval. Save them the time, council the time, and save the applicant money.
What's in time?
Also, Lisa and I were just talking about this before the meeting. Red River Planning, which I wasn't aware, charges us six thousand dollars. Every time there's a zoning bylaw on there. And that's being reviewed. So I'm wondering before. If this is going to come to the next council meeting because R R P D is asking all the municipalities to try and have this approved. I wonder, Lisa, if you could confirm they're not charging us six thousand. Because Derek said it would be less than half an hour. It was a minor wording change. That was it.
Yeah.
So can we get that confirmed and writing?
Same comments passed it, but they, uh, Mr. Sprecher and Steve from board said that it was a long debate. Uh, West St. Paul came forward with a whole bunch of questions, so they were taking it back to their council to, from Derek's answer. And East St. Paul was kind of where we are now. So they had a bunch of questions. They were taking it back to their next council meeting. So just to let you know where we're all at, and here we are now at the same.
So, again, so if if the zoning bylaw says. The, you're allowed two hundred for frontage on, 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 on the, on the rest, on the R R. And the person comes in and wants to apply for six lots, which would be a hundred and sixty-six feet, then they need the variance. Are you saying they won't allow them to to apply for uh undersized lots in this subdivision?
My take on it was, when they come, like, we've had variances here that they're short ten feet, two feet. Like that, we'll see the size of lot. So if they say, that was my question. If they come before us for a six lot subdivision. Well, then they're getting six lots. We should be, we will be, or should be advised saying all that variance information will be in that subdivision application. And if they'll say, okay, lot one is ten feet short or whatever to. It's a dual approval process. Like, they can't come, that was my concern. Somebody applies for a six lot subdivision and a twelve.
No.
This, this, but it can happen in, in an engineer subdivision where you have roads and corners and that kind of stuff. Because then on high-shaped lots, you don't have frontage. So then you require a variance for it and maybe under, under, but then. They're requiring a variance to come at a later date because you'll see at all time that, you know, some, some subdivision approval was granted on such and such a date, and now this is the variance. Coming back. And sometimes in the past councils have looked at it and kind of almost wanted to not approve the variance.
And I think perhaps Lisa. If you have a minute, that could be confirmed with Derek. But as far as I concerned, it was exactly what you said. It's to avoid that dual.
The resolution that they're asking to pass is to avoid that dual and it's, it's. I suspect that it'll eventually trickle down to our zoning bylaw being amended, but what this particular resolution is requesting that all the municipalities. Pass this resolution, which allows them to take it to the province, asking for an amendment to the Planning Act itself. To, so that it's not a requirement. If if there's a minimum size or frontage as part of a subdivision. Approval of that subdivision in effect takes in those.
So you're not coming back three, three, six months later going, now I need a variant. Why didn't we do this when my.
Correct. So this resolution is asking for the municipality to support, that supports this. Uh, amendment to the Planning Act to allow it. Now, where this might, I don't know how that, if the Planning Act is then changed. I'm not sure where that falls within our zoning bylaw then. Do we have to, I'm not sure if there's wording around this that may need to be changed. I don't know. This particular request is a, a resolution that'll go into the province regarding.
And Saint Clement is putting that resolution, asking for our support at the. Really, no convention. Because Derek said this is all political. It's. Staff like planning and planning was asking us, because this is all political. Politicians to, because province has to amend legislation.
Are we taking away our uh approval process though? Like, when they come back, are we eliminating that or do we still have a say in?
This is just eliminating a second appearance for a lot area.
As long as we still have a say in.
Yeah, that was part of Western fault concern because. By removing, by by putting the variance together with the subdivision, if I understood correctly. That, that meant the contractor, subdivision person. Only appeared in council once. And there was a little bit of concern about, sometimes, you know, when they have to come back for that variance, you learn a little bit more about what's going on and blah, 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 like that. That was sort of, was that, were you just, they were going with that?
Well, um, their board member one said, uh, maybe Brett confirmed, some subdivisions don't have to come before the planning board in West St. Paul. So that I didn't, I didn't quite understand that either.
If if there's uh. You don't have to bring a subdi- there's no subdivision required if no new roads are required.
Ah. Okay, you have to come in for the variance.
Yes. So if you don't have like uh, uh, any new roads, you don't have to do a subdivision if it's on, if it's going to be on existing roads.
Okay, thank you, because I didn't quite understand where she was going with that. But they were taking it all back to their council for discussion. Uh, the.
So uh, where is the loss revenue going to be paid up? Since you don't have to come once.
Well, I, I think you pay it upfront.
I don't know. There's not going to be a change to the application. What Derek said.
There's none.
There's none.
There is no loss rever- revenue because that supposedly, that charge is supposed to be cost recovery. So in the notification, the mailouts, the, the, you know, and the staff time to do the report. That's supposedly what it was, which was my concern about why is a variance for a lot, a building beside a lot line? And why is, why is lot size of three times more money when the, when the work is the same? That was my question. And the answer was. If they get an extra lot, then they can afford it. So, which isn't, which isn't right. So. Keep all the same, the, the plus the same.
Do you have another comment?
Uh, if we're done that one, yeah.
Um, okay, any further? And like Lisa said, this is just for, do a resolution of support from in the planning up. Any further comments? Okay, item eight point two.
Okay, uh, does I have a planning one? And I thought the R P D memo was on that, but. I had sent a email to Assistant W C C E O about pole sheds on, on, on ag land.
Oh, wait.
A pole shed, like a farm building on ag land? Like, if you don't, you can't get a permit for a building unless you have a residence on there and a farmer wants to put up a large machine shed onto. A hundred and sixty acre piece of land, but she doesn't have them.
All right. I just, uh, in regards to that, just before we get too far on it, um, I did talk to the planning district about that and they do have. Uh, wording, um, that it's not required for eggland. They've, they've resolved that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Eight point two, uh, promoting Aboriginal student success invite. Um, it's their, um. Like their grad, and then I see this year they've changed it to first ones since COVID, they're having a lunch. Oops. I couldn't, I tried to get a full sharing. Um, I couldn't open the. Action, we would detail upon me, one to on June seventeen.
Can you do a course with sponsorship?
Yeah, there's no sponsorship, no, um. Yeah, none of that is available. We can't, it's not attached. But it's this thing, we still have time, so perhaps it's could be moved to the council, the next council one. Please. I know in the past of councils where it was at the. Lord Seltzer High School Gymnasium. How was everything? It's a pretty much a whole day event. Um, it was a dinner. My husband and I attended the dinner last night. Had it, but now I see it's moved to a lunch. But we'll see when we can get it on Tuesday. Okay, now we have on camera. Motion be resolved by councilman in camera at.
Six thirty-seven.
Thank you. Six thirty-seven. Damn. To discuss matters that are preliminary, in preliminary stages and respecting which discussion and public could prejudice the municipalities' ability to carry out. Its activities or negotiations as well as legal and personnel issues. And be it for the result that the members of council agree to keep him confident. A matter that is discussed at a meeting that is close to the public under section one, two, three. And that the committee decides to keep confidential until the matter is discussed at a meeting of council or a committee conducted in public. May I have a mover, please? Deputy Mayor Dornbaugh, second or? Counselor Maracki. All in favor? Oh, no, Gary. Motion to move out of camera at. Seven thirty-five. Yeah, may I have a mover, please? Counselor Siker, Counselor Maracki, seconds. All in favor? Those both during that period. Next item will be. What time was that? I think seven thirty. Nope. Nancy A. German, motion to adjourn the meeting at seven thirty-five P M. May I have a mover, please? Uh, just, accounts of people corn, second or? Deputy Mayor Dornbaugh. All in favor? Post, Gary. Have a good night, everyone.